Do you want to do roll call?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I count us all up.
Mr. Bill?
I'm here.
Dave Blak?
Here.
Randy Moore?
Here.
Frank Reiter?
Here.
Jennifer Curio?
Here.
Tim Morrison?
Here.
Jared Brown? Billy Moylan is...
Uh, yes.
And John is here.
Now, if there's any chance in front of minutes.
Well, you don't read my email.
Is it spicy?
Check my secret email.
Were you Skyping for...
Huh?
You were Skyping.
See, we have you at Dallas.
No, I'm here. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If there's no comments or revisions, someone can make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Yeah, we'll make the motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? For State?
Tonight, it is a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing. We may take questions and comments after this session. This is a chance for the planning board to give our comments, questions, suggestions to the town board as an overview of the master development plan. We will be given the opportunity for more specific comments and review when the applicant submits a specific site plan and submission application to the planning board. The town board has got a public hearing for the plan on Monday, October 21st, and will submit to the county planning board for their review and comments as well. The town board will review all comments from above and may request amendments to this application. Okay, we can begin. Would you like to give an overview or anything?
Sure, I'd love to. I'll thank you all for the opportunity. I thought it might be helpful to do a few minutes of overview and be available for questions and the answers if that is appropriate. I'm hoping to update the board and be able to make it a little easier as you go through the material. I thought I could do three things and not take very much time doing them. First one is just a quick recap of where we are in the process. As you probably all know, our application has been through a secret review that started in 2007, completed in July of this year with findings from both the DEC in July and from the town just recently in October. Those findings are part of the packet that you all have. The zoning law was passed just recently as well, which creates the master plan mechanism, which, you know, we have a submission for. I did want to thank the planning board for your comments on the zoning law. That went through a lot of iterations and, you know, with hard work from Mary Lou, comments from the county planner, from the planning board here, I think the document's much better than it was when it started. So with the zoning law in place, it calls for a master plan application to the town board with planning board review. As Billy just said, I think you have 30 days to make that your comments, and then the town board will vote on it. Once the master plan is approved, then we would move into a site plan submission, which is a bit more of a traditional process that you're familiar with, with the exception that this is a very different process kind of altogether. Sort of the second thing I wanted to talk about is why the process is different. I think the process is different primarily because of the secret review and the master plan concept. So, you know, the secret process, long and hard, and I think pretty thorough vetting of environmental impact. So I think the planning board typically looks at those kinds of issues, and most of that has really been reviewed. And again, the findings are in the binder. Now, the zoning creates this master plan concept. I was on the way over here listening to NPR earlier today, and they were talking about a PUD, a Planned Unit Development for Solar Array somewhere in...for Schittmore College. It's similar to that kind of a concept when you look at a master plan. It's really similar to a PUD. And, you know, the idea with a master plan is that you are looking at a general layout and design and approving kind of density in the general layout and design, allowing some flexibility for site-specific design as we get into site plan. You know, important caveats are that the secret process has framed a bunch of things that we must do. The most important one, I think, for all of us, you know, environmentally anyway, is on this plan on the wall, the hatched area in the background is the construction disturbance, and that must not be exceeded. The total of 66 acres of construction disturbance has been identified in SECPRA, and that is one of our hard numbers, our hard limits that we have to abide by. With regards...there are many more identified in the findings. With regards to the zoning, there are, as you've seen in the zoning laws, specific development standards and design guidelines that must be met as well. So the master plan has to do at least those things, conform with SECPRA. You know, this plan that we're putting forward for approval would be, you know, very close to where we'll end up, and then in site plan, we may, you know, shift buildings and talk to you all about the various site-specific stuff. So I think at the end of the day, as long as we do those things, we conform with SECPRA, we show the town board that this plan conforms with the zoning law and the design guidelines and development standards, then we should be good to go. And it's when we get to site plan that we have to really get into the specifics. Okay, so the third thing I wanted to do is provide just a quick overview, maybe it's a bit of a recap, of the plan itself. What I wanted to do with these guys here is, since we lugged them in here, since Brian lugged them in here tonight, for everybody to be able to see. So this is just an entire shot of the parcel because it's not shown there. This is the entire 779 acres. The dark green from my hand north is the conservation easement from 1999, and that's everything above. And then this is the development area to the south. And while we're here, this is the additional acres, 104 or so, that we're going to place in the conservation easement. The trigger for this is the DEC's final permit. When they give us the final permit, we have 90 days to effect, I believe, 90 days to effect this easement. All right, that one's fast. This one is all warped because it's old and recycled now. I just want...you may not see it well, but this is from the DEIS, which is several years ago now, and I just wanted to show what the basic changes are from then to now. And the major changes are that this neighborhood of homes and this neighborhood of homes north of the ponds and a parking area that was behind the kiln wall, you know, over here, have all been either eliminated or relocated, including some other yoga studio and a ill-fated teahouse up on the ridge. All of these things in this area that are...was considered sensitive, bat hybernaculate area, bat habitat, have been removed or eliminated. So that's what happened from the DEIS. Some of these homes were added in kind of a tighter cluster in this neighborhood, but most of it was eliminated. The total homes was 160, and now it's 154. Some of those are now worked for us. There's a little back and forth on the housing. All right. So this is the same as that, so I'll talk to that one. This is what's in your packet, Appendix G, I believe it is. And very quickly, what you're looking at from the land use perspective, the dark green is land that will go into conservation. The light green is what we are referring to as common land owned by a property owners' association and will be deed...you know, will have deed restrictions on it. One of our big commitments to sustainability is that the entire property will, you know, be protected, but the light green will have, and much of the residential areas as well, will have deed restrictions that will protect wetlands, and really, the focus is to limit tree clearing. So Property Owners Association will be in charge of enforcing those standards and those deed restrictions. It's still a hotel, resort, residential community. Maybe I can just...you don't have a pointer, Dave? No, it's okay. So, you know, you can see on your own plans, this is the hotel, this is the spa, fitness center, and wellness center is the main amenities. And then there are, again, hotels, 130 rooms, it's a lodge, it's a lodge, it's these villas, and these are hotel cabins. So the orange represents sort of the commercial area. Then the other four colors are residential areas, and the bottom two here are the town homes that we call this Point Comfort, and this is Kiln Village. And then the red one west of Benoit Road and the purple are the other two residential clusters, and those are single families.
There's a large white portion in this map. It looks like the northern part.
These are private in parcels.
They're the existing parcels?
Privately held by neighbors. Their neighbors...
Okay, thank you.
And this is, you know, including these, all of these. That white is not the same as that white. This is probably a gray or something in the actual plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, the rest of it, I think, is...I mean, I could say more, but I think I'll stop there. It's all in your binder. Billy, then I would just, you know, you're going to do what you need, but if there are any questions that I can answer specifically, that might be more helpful. I wanted to keep it brief, so.
I would say let's open up the rest of it and see what...
I have one inquiry. I'm not sure I was known to be correct. The plan, the binder that we got talked about a possible day pass and regular public access. I think that could be flushed out a little more. The basis, residential, which is, I mean...
Yeah, the idea of the day pass is that...it's probably easiest to show on this one. You know, as...I hope everybody knows now, the rail trail is open through the property. It's fabulous. I encourage you to take a walk or a bike ride. We were just here today, and we were checking on some stuff in this conservation easement. The idea with those day passes in first order is that when this is enhanced, you know, part of our plan is a...these amenities, and then the big amenity is a trail network, a recreational trail network that includes this part of the property and allows for competition venues, mountain bike races, triathlons, all that kind of stuff as part of the hotel. The day pass idea is, in first order, is that where the rail trail meets this parcel, and this is really the best and only access to these 400 acres, is that there will be, you know, somebody there from the hotel that will either here or at the outdoor activity center issue the day pass, or you'll be able to get it at the hotel or wherever you get it, and be able to use these trails, swim in the lake, also provide swimming here, but that'll be, you know, subject to the hotel's discretion. But it is in our documents. It's going to happen. I think with Mary Lou, we've talked about the mechanism of kind of guaranteeing it as something that needs to be in place, part of the site plan approval process.
She raised the issue before in the folder I was giving. It said, you know, a day pass system that was left unspecified. The details, and I'm glad that she raised it.
Yeah. Well, many of the details will get determined later. I mean, it's hard to define...I mean, I think there's a lot of folks who would like to know how much it will cost, and I think that's going to come when the resort is open.
What I'm saying, that to me seems to be the major public concern that I hear and I share as a major concern. And to the extent possible, my opinion is it should be detailed as soon as possible in the process. Thank you.
You're welcome. And just because I think it's important to say it loud and proud, I mean, the day pass public access...I'm sorry, the public access issue, you know, it should not be underemphasized what a big deal it is to have the rail trail open and to have it connect Kingston to Gardner is a big deal. That becomes a permanent easement when we reach our approvals. So as fast as we can get approved is when that will be permanent forever. The documents have been drafted, they're signed, there's no way out. As long as we get our approvals, that's a binding legal document.
Quick question being rail trail. 315 acres or preserves this open space. Does that include the acres and rail trail, or that would be in addition to the 515?
Well, the conservation land is 515 acres, give or take, and that excludes the rail trail. Okay, the rail trail is a linear mile and a half. This easement is held by the Rondell de Sopis Land Conservancy. This easement would go to the Rondell de Sopis Land Conservancy, and our rail trail easement is with the Walkeville Valley Land Trust and Open Space Institute. So RELC is sort of on both sides of the rail trail.
Tim, in what looks like southeast portion, there's some light green outside of the...yeah, what is that?
Well, this is Breezy Hill Road, and then this connects back to the property, and it's an arbitrary delineation where the conservation easement stops. You know, we did more than the DEC asked for, but, you know, this is left primarily because there's frontage, but, you know, it's...we don't plan anything there, we can't do anything there.
So there's no development plans in that?
Correct. No development plans. The development plans are limited to the 66 acres that have the hatching in the background, which is, you know, in terms of a master plan concept, if we were to try to shift a major component to a new part of a land, that would not abide with a master plan approval. Master plan approval, you can rotate the house to get more sun, but you can't pick up a neighborhood and try to move it somewhere else, not without going through the approval process.
I want to be real clear on the day pass rail trail component. They're going through riding my bike on the rail trail to Kingston. I will not have to pay any sort of a fee as I cross your property.
Correct.
However, if I choose to go off the rail trail onto one of the other newly created trails, or some of the existing ones are there, or take a swim, then I have to go and get a pass.
Pay a fee, yes.
No different than at Mulholland, right?
Correct.
Because at Mulholland, they...
There is one significant difference. Mulholland doesn't allow you on there any circumstance to swim in the lake. So that is an actual significant difference.
And they have a significant fee just to go on their property, which is just amazing. And what you're doing with the rail trail is excellent.
Yeah. You know, what we say in the secret documents is that the model for the day pass is something between Mulholland Preserve and Mulholland Mountain House. So, you know, that raises...you know, that's where people start worrying about, is it going to be this much or that much? You know, what I can say is that the access...this is going to be developed for, you know, as an excellent trail network, for bird watching, for camping, for, you know, bikers and for, you know, lots of uses, and we're going to do that responsibly. And so, you know, there will be a carrying capacity defined that if the day pass, you know, if it's a sunny day and there's a lot of people want to get in there, there may be days where, you know, it'll be capped and, you know, access won't be allowed at that moment. So we are doing this respective of the easement itself, which is to protect these natural resources. That's one thing I know for sure. The other thing I know for sure is that we'll know a lot more about how much and how it's going to work when we're actually there, when we're just not there.
There is an extensive trail network already in existence?
Yes.
And how many miles of trail there are?
You know, it's in the documents. I think it's a...I don't know if it's the...what we project or what's in existence, but there'll be 10 to 15 miles, I think, is probably when we're finished. I can't remember. It's in...
I think there used to be like probably three different courses that 10K races.
Oh, there's lots of ways to do 10Ks in the property. The thing about this, the trails that are in here, is that a lot of them are logging roads that didn't necessarily go the right way, and, you know, we will reroute some of those trails and clean them up and do a better job and, you know, try to follow some contours that are a little bit more interesting anyway. So that's, you know, there are trails here, but really, you know, there's one main logging road that takes you to Twin Lakes, and there's some spur loops and stuff. We'll do better than that.
You mentioned camping. Are you going to have like camp sites or wilderness camping? Are there flyers back there?
We don't really know. The easement allows for temporary platforms and that kind of camping. I mean, the idea is, you know, this is fresh from our bike ride today, that, you know, some folks in the getaway from wherever they're getting away from when they come to the hotel, they may want to get away from the getaway, right? The hotel may be a little too busy, and they may want to be able to spend an overnight in this...that's the idea.
Are they going to be public camping or just for guests at the hotel?
I would imagine big guests for the hotel, but maybe that's part of the day pass as well. I mean, we...these are details that the hotel needs to be able to answer. Yeah.
So there's a good chance that the population of your resort and the surrounding housing is going to use up the carrying capacity of that reserved land anyhow?
You're making an assumption. I don't know that that's the case. I mean, it's a very big parcel, you know...
Parking is going to pretty much establish how many people can access it anyway.
Well, nobody can park anywhere near here. To get here, you have to hike or bike. So, I mean, there's a control in terms of somebody with a clicker or something that says, okay, we have this many people in here right now, or a sign-in book like, you know...
For those of us who live in one distance, I mean, like you...
Well, yes, I mean, you can get onto the rail trail, but I mean, that's one way to get there.
So there's eight phases of construction documented in here, and page 35 says, "The condition of the town rules and will secret findings that public access, rail trail easement shall become permanent once at..." I don't know, a grammatical thing here. "...once at first phase site plan approval." Does that mean there's eight different site plan approvals here? I'm throwing this out, anybody can answer it. One for each phase?
Well, I think there'll be...the resort will be one application. I would say that the housing would be another one, and once that is approved, and it would send to them the phase.
Single family, one's on infrastructure, right?
Well, put it at page 39.
The first site...the first site plan would be...I think it's...your answer to your question is yes. Would be my assumption that they would get a site plan approval for every one of those actions. The first part of their site plans in that chart is actually infrastructure, I think is the first part.
Yes, demolition.
It's demolition, right.
So if I take page 39, page 35, put it together, what site plan approval occurs for demolition for hotel and that, there's the...
Fred, the...as I understand it from the town code officer, the demolition does not require a site plan. It's a building permit. So the first phase of site plan would be for infrastructure. I think we have the option as an applicant to do the entire project under one site plan, which would be, you know, probably not the best idea for us.
You want it all geared to one site?
Exactly, or to do by phases. The rail trail easement becomes permanent at the first site plan approval, which would in our case most certainly be infrastructure.
Well, that's what's documented here, is phase two, infrastructure maintenance here.
You have this, Tim, as proposed construction phasing. That doesn't necessarily mean phases in front of the...
Correct.
Planning board.
Correct.
It may come several times through different site plans, but this, they might get phased through four at the first.
It's captioned as a phasing plan.
Right, construction phasing, not site.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right. Another place there is both proposed construction phase. Who do I...
We're eager to, you know, the rail trail's open, we put a lot of hard work into it, a lot of effort. We've worked very hard with OSI and the land trust. You know, we're eager to see it, for everybody's comfort level, to see it go permanent, and that should be, you know, very soon. I mean, that's why we're here. That'll help everybody feel good about the rail trail. It won't go away.
Well, at this point, you're trying to take it away from the...
Of course.
During your construction phase, what are your plans for that? Are you reusing people for that?
Yeah, so the question is what happens during construction to the rail trail, and the easement agreements with the land trust and OSI have anticipated all that. There will be a way for the rail trail to stay continuous through construction. All right, now, there's complexity around that, but the rail trail comes like this right now, right in front of the existing hotel building. The permanent rail trail, when the whole project is completed, reroutes just behind this clustering, comes back down to the rail bed. And that is so that this neighborhood, you know, those homeowners have the rail trail behind them instead of in front of them. So that is another piece of the puzzle. During construction, it's likely that this existing, what we call the temporary easement, will remain for most of construction, because most of the construction is far enough away. When this is being constructed, there is a route that comes behind the ridge and comes back...comes back down here to the rail bed. It's not as flat as my friend Chris would like it, but it's continuous, and it'll be beautiful, too.
On the idea of the donation agreement, there's...excuse me, difference represented by the donors and the donees, and one of them is at the best actual knowledge, there's no suit action, arbitration, legal administration, other proceedings pending or threatened against the easement right of way, ready for narrow up. I'll take no wrong away, but has the John Wolfe Act ever been addressed?
Well, John Rolle is south of us.
But he's liable to say he still owns the railroad.
Well, I have no comment. I don't want to say to that. I've still not had, you know, as much as the last seven years of my life here have been a movie with interesting characters, I have not met that character face to face, so.
Jim just brought up a good point. John sold the Williams.
That's the only thing that he probably will not point to.
He frequently goes out on the trust and telling them when they were constructing the trust, he frequently told the people that he still owned it.
Right, yeah.
But he did, I mean, that's a good point. He sold the one and a half miles to Walter Williams in the...whenever it was. Immediately when he acquired the rest of it, he sold...I mean, I think what happened, you know, don't quote me on this, I believe Walter Williams helped finance his purchase of the rest of the trail, and Walter bought the one and a half miles. So it has been clearly in Williams' ownership ever since.
But in John's mind, he can hold his magic railroad string and put the pieces back together without compensating the owners of the parcels.
That's why they have lawyers.
Okay, we can anticipate things, you know, we can, but we can't. In our minds, we can, but it's not really relevant.
It's been demonstrated up to now that no court's willing to agree with him on it, so.
Well, we also, when we did our title homework way back when, I mean, our attorney in New York City, you know, did a very hard look at all those issues, so, you know, that's all I can say, really.
Until I started reviewing this, I had never heard of the Rondell de Sopis Land Conservancy. And I have a website, and I went out there, but I couldn't find any... And I, and I have a website and I went out there, but I, but I couldn't find any terms and conditions of when land is turned over to them. Is it open for public access? Yada, yada, yada. I mean, have you, have you looked, I assume you've looked into that and you understand what the terms and conditions were?
Yeah, there is an easement agree, on this existing 411 acres, there's an easement agreement that is part of the DEIS and/or the FEIS. So, that's available to review. I'm happy to find it before you get it to you. It spells out what can and can't be done on the land. And we have, as part of our, I'll call it secret slash permit discussions with the DEC, drafted a easement agreement for this parcel as well, which spells out what can and can't be done. And that is also, I don't know if this, must be part of the FEIS, it's certainly part of the, the DEC permit package. So, both of those exist. I'd be happy to share them with you.
But essentially, it, it gives HRVR, whatever your holding will be called, sole access to that property?
They're private, this one's a, I, I believe they're both private, this one's definitely private easement. So, you know, we have control over how the land is used. We have to abide by the terms of the easement, which are mostly around conservation. And, and, you know, this has conditions on it that are more specific to environmental concerns of the DEC. That's wetlands and such. You know, this little piece right here is part of the easement and we have sort of this carved out for the rail trail cafe. And the rail trail cafe is a permitted use within the easement, as an example. I, I guess I could've said, maybe I'll say it since there's a big fat pobs. Pregnant pobs. This concept plan, this layout and this design is exactly the same as the FEIS and is exactly the same as what's been submitted to the DEC all these years, with the exception that we moved the homes from the DEIS that I said at the beginning. But everything else is exactly what's in the secret review. Nothing's different.
Several times it says that the yoga meditation studio had been eliminated for mitigation. Is anything in here that would preclude this locating them in other buildings on the site?
No. We'll practice yoga. Some of them will practice yoga there, don't worry.
Could I use Billy's statement though as a segue? As to what is the procedure that the board is gonna use now as we go through and review this? Tim has given his presentation. Bill has some questions. I have some questions. Are we gonna do a page by page? How, how are we as a board gonna review this and gather comments?
I have a suggestion in regards to that. We have thirty days to supply our comments to the town board. If we don't, we'll be in default and they'll just move forward without them. I think that date is November third?
We got them on the fifth, so I would say probably maybe-
The fourth. It's the fourth. So, it should be November third is the last that, that we have to-
Sunday.
Right, the Sunday. So, that's where I'm going with it. So, my suggestion is we hold a special meeting the Wednesday prior, which is, I have to get my calendar out. The Wednesday prior to the Sunday, it would be-
Joe has a calendar.
The thirtieth.
Thirty, thirty.
Thursday's Halloween.
Right, so the thirtieth. So, I'm suggesting that we have a special meeting on the thirtieth. And at that point, we'll make a motion as a board to approve the comments that we will be collecting as board members and submitting to our planning consultant and our attorney to compile for us. So, between now and then, each board member could prepare their comments.
Leslie should probably compile them.
Compiling, okay.
I don't think you want to change this to that.
Well, you know, that's, that's not-
Okay.
Well, Dave has done that before for us in the, in the referral process.
Yeah, I think he's requested that.
So, so we could-
Joe, are you making a motion now?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, it's just a discussion of how we can proceed forward with this, because I don't think tonight is the form for us to go through it line by line. It's just, it's a fifty-one page document plus a plan. So, we'll give each planning board member, maybe members even had, haven't had a chance to really look at it, could sit down, digest it, look at it and supply the comments to either, we'll have to decide whether it's gonna be Leslie or our planning consultant. At that point, they can compile them into a master document and on our special meeting, we can look at it, review it, and as a board, submit it to the town board.
Because as we, as we've seen in the past, there's always some conflicting comments. I mean, I'll say something, you'll say something that's either in opposition or, not necessarily in opposition, but additive or, so we really need time to, as a board, go through all those comments that are gathered and, and come together as a consensus of, these are the board's comments.
Yeah, but I think we're, aren't we, Tim, as, as part of the board though, isn't it that you may have a comment, Joe may have a comment that opposes, both of them are comments, when they go to the town board to be evaluated, what they're gonna just do is evaluate and accept which they think is the appropriate things to proceed with the action. Isn't that how it would work?
No, 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 that, that's actually, I would, I would actually not, I would disagree with that process. The process that we have in place for referrals now is we collect the comments, we review the comments as a board and we deliberate them, and then we adopt them as a board. So, if there's a comment that, let's just say, for instance, Tim has a comment and I have a conflicting comment, at that point, it should go to a vote to the board which comment we're going to proceed with. It could be Tim's, mine, or a version of the two. And at that point, that issue would be settled. So, let's just say there's fifty comments and we're done. And we all look at the fifty comments. Maybe we agree on them all and it's done. If we disagree, then we deliberate those comments as a board, and if we have to, we take a roll vote on those comments as a board. Once the roll-
Well, let's just take what you're saying and turn it into a motion. It's a slight amendment. It may surprise you.
Okay.
And it is that we hold a special meeting, but it be on the twenty-third, not the thirty.
I, I don't, I don't, that's an arbitrary-
Right, I understand that.
Tim, you had some more questions?
Well, I was gonna say, and if Joe and I can't come to agreement, well, it's a motion, it's passed, and as an individual, I have an opportunity to send a, a letter to the board saying that I disagree. But I, I believe that whatever comes out of this board has to be the consensus of this board.
No, we agree, we vote.
Well, yeah, well, it is, that's the consensus. We agreed to it, we voted on it, and, well-
A vote is not a-
It's not a consensus, so you're right. It has to be the agreed to and voted on comments that go to the town board.
It's not a planning board recommendation. Just like we can disagree on whether you granted someone a special use permit, you know, majority is what happens.
Now, I, as I go through this, I have lots of, I've got lots of green tags. Many of these are comments, but a lot of them are questions that, as, as a board, we probably can't answer. So, I, I think it would be valuable at that special meeting that we have people here who can answer that, which probably-
From the applicant.
From the applicant. I, I think it'd be important that the applicants here, because like I said, you can see the green tags. These aren't issues, but they are, well, why this as opposed to this?
One, one thing I would say, Tim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this back to our consultant, because this is the only questions I have. When we're, when you review what, what's in front of us, they have, the code has been adopted by the town, which requires this master plan, which is in front of us today for review. The master plan has to be consistent with the FEIS. It even, it even says that it is within the plan. So, I wanted to kind of shift that to the consultant, let them do some work in that period of time to say, is this consistent with the FEIS? Because if it is, there's really not a lot for us to do, in my opinion, as a board, if it is consistent to this. I mean, you may have some questions, but if it's consistent, then it's probably gonna-
No, but the, the sense I got as I looked through this is that there's more detail in here than there is in the FEIS. And, and those are some of the areas, and I, I got wrapped up in some of the minutia even.
Can I, can I address it just quickly? It might be helpful. I mean, the, the master development plan, the application is really, I mean, Chris asked last night at the town board meeting if it's the same or if it's new material, it's the same material. The narrative of the master plan application there is very similar, if not identical, to what's been in the DEIS and the FEIS, particularly since it's a description of the project. A project description and the articulation of how many units and, and what size they are and where they go and the infrastructure, all that stuff is lifted straight out of the secret documents. There's very little new. There's not really any additional detail. I mean, there may be, there are things that modified slightly and that gets described, it's all been updated, but there's really nothing new. You know, the newest part of that binder is the discussion of, of design standards, where we added some more, you know, language. We tried to be more specific around the design standards that we need to meet. But the rest of it is really the same stuff. It's the same plan, it's the same stuff.
Chairman, I'm gonna try again. I made a motion, but I didn't get a second that we hold a special meeting on the twenty-third. I believe it's the appropriate date.
I'll second, is it twenty-third or thirty? Is it twenty-third?
No, I'm, I'm maybe twenty-third.
Okay.
Are you seconding?
I'll second the motion.
Oh, I was just gonna have some, you know, discussion whether or not Mary Lou and Dave-
They, they can, they can.
Okay.
But what, will Mary Lou can, Dave can?
We need to see if, if this is available. I mean, that's a, might be, I'll check the calendar.
How about a friendly amendment? Our, our first choice is the twenty-third, if not thirty, depending upon availability of this site.
We could find another site, couldn't we?
I'm sure we could.
Go next door.
At seven-thirty?
Yes.
Do you have the calendar? Your actual calendar? Um, the, the town, town.
Oh, there is, there's one-
I can tell you about the acryl.
I'd go check the calendar out.
Where was the school building office?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Okay, so I need, I have a motion from Fred and a second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You guys in favor of the motion? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, so is-
What should we ask our consultant with between now and then? That's my question to the board. And my, my suggestion is, one thing I just had mentioned, is to ensure that this master development plan is consistent with the FEIS. I'd want him to give it a read and compare the documents to make sure it is. I think that's a big thing.
To make sure it's consistent with the-
With the actual code as well, with the plan, development area code. I just shortened it up. I'm calling it PDA.
But I would suggest, my standpoint, as suggested, some suggestive language for public access, more detailed fee structure, what's the minimum position.
I, I, I'm kind of against setting, having applicants set fees. I don't know if that's even within the purview of the board. I would find-
I understand what you're saying, but I think that needs to be some, since such an issue of public concern.
I don't know if they can actually, but the twenty-third is reserved for the Democratic Committee from seven to nine P.M. So, we're-
They're still over there.
Okay. So, then we are good.
Okay. They're over there.
We can certainly bring it up, but it'd be difficult for, for an applicant-
I understand.
That, that, you know.
But some sort of statement has to be, that feel major about it.
Best case scenario, when do you think that, you know, Dave passes would be available in a number of light years?
What we say is that we will establish access and fees when the resort is operational.
Yeah, that, that is in the law, I believe, that's where the funding, it states that when it's first used as a resort or for residences, that must be set before that can be done.
I, I think it's extra possible, Tim.
That's, that's not a master plan.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's too far in the future to be trying to calculate that.
Could I get a clarification in, as, as I said, I went through this, as you can see what you're attached, and I went through it pretty quickly. But I, I don't wanna go through it in more detail and pick on things that may have already been resolved by the DEIS. So, how do, as a board, as, as we're sitting at home reviewing this in preparation for the twenty-third meeting, what, what are we, what are we reviewing and looking for? Because now it's not clear.
Good question. I think one way we can handle that is we, we, we're gonna charge our consultant to compare it to the code and to compare it to the FEIS. We put him on a shorter deadline and give us a recommendation document, maybe areas that need a little bit of attention or not. And that, we can focus in on those areas, and if there's additional areas that you wanna bring up, then obviously we bring those up. But it would give you maybe the shortlist that you're looking for. Is that set? Dave, can you guys prepare something for us?
Yeah, I mean, I, I did a, I had a review memo last night, but I had some technical comments and whatnot. And what I mean, I can do is, I've sent those to Billy already, to Leslie, and I can focus like a second, almost a second review on consistency, as opposed to technical.
Well, maybe through a little bit of both, send it out to the board and kind of give us like a shortlist of things that you think are pertinent, that we could, should be giving maybe a closer look at.
And I'll take these and I'll put them in a memo format. I wanted to get them out so that Billy had, but I can put them-
I know, it's an hour and a half here and-
Now, could, could you handle it? Because I, I wanna understand how, when I go home and start looking at this again, how I'm gonna proceed. And, and I don't wanna do a whole lot of extra work.
I agree with that.
That when I come in here, people say, oh, we've already resolved that, and, and you spun your wheels for nothing. So, my unders, what I think I heard is that you're gonna compare this to the, the final environmental impacts.
The findings, the finding-
The findings.
That's completely binding.
Secret determination is.
Okay. And if there are any differences or-
Something missing.
Addendums or additions, you're gonna highlight them for us.
Right.
Now, let me ask one more question. So, the only thing that I really, because the DEC and the town board have approved the, the findings and the final environmental impact and all that stuff, the only thing then, as a board, we have to consider really are any differences between this document and what is in the findings in the final EIS. Is that a true statement?
I'd like to, can I say something? I mean, I don't think that's quite true. I think, I, my understanding of what the planning board role right now would be is to look at this submission and make sure it's compliant with the zoning law.
Right, that's what we had said, that, we had said that earlier.
Yeah, the zoning, but the zoning law's not just secret.
The zoning law, which in all honesty was, if you read it, reads just like this. And I've, and I've compared it to-
Well, and that's exactly what they're trying to do, is to make theirs fit into the zoning law. That's why they probably-
Zoning law was written to fit into this. So, I, I mean, and, and I've, and it's almost verbatim language from the master plan in the zoning law. So, we could, we could do that, we could do that-
I'm saying zoning came up before this document became, became the document.
I, I can say, having worked on the master, the zoning law, we, I looked at the sections of the zoning law, development standards, design guidelines, conform with this, conform with that, and had the master plan binder address each of those topics. I mean, that was intentional because we have to address them all, because that's what the law calls for.
So, could we ask our consultant to do one more thing?
I would ask him to do his next one.
To, to, to verify that what's in the master plan is in conformance with the zoning.
Yeah, that's one of the things that he said. That's the first thing he said. Yeah, that's one of the things that he said, that's the first thing he said.
That's called, it's the PDA, the Plan Development Area.
You're right.
I sure, it's the Bene Water Lakes Plan Development Area, PDA. Seventy-five, fifty-eight.
I recognize this is not a public hearing. Nonetheless, I notice that a representative of the town committee is urging, urging the board to say something. And I would like to pass that.
That's, that's, I agree with you, Fred, but let's wrap up Tim's thought and the rest of the board's thoughts. So what are we charging our consultant with? So this is a done deal.
Okay, I insist that I don't know what the comment is.
So, so just to wrap this up, right, Tim?
Right.
We're going to charge our consultant to review the master development plan for its consistency with the findings, the DEC findings, and the new town code, the new town wall, the new zoning code. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the board is all in agreement with that?
Verify and compare.
Verify and compare. And what's the deadline that we, that we want to, because we want to get that so we can look at that tomorrow. Tomorrow. My earliest next Thursday or Friday. Okay.
Well, but that gives us, next Thursday or Friday gives us as a board a week to digest it before our meeting. I think that's, that's, that's very reasonable.
Okay.
So are you saying seventeenth or eighteenth?
No, you're saying the board needs to have comments, or I can have this memo to the board by eighteen?
By eighteen?
Now, now, Tim, do we want to add a few other things to this? Do we want him to just look, do we want our consultant just to look at the master development code in its whole as well? He's going to do this comparison.
Well, I, I believe as he's going through, he, he's going to be reading, probably not every line, or maybe every line, and if there's something there that he sees that the board should be aware of, at least for discussion. I mean, if there's, if there's an issue, he'll identify it.
And like I said, I've already done that, sort of, I've done a technical assessment. Now, I have an email that summarizes my comments on the technical portions, and I can just include that in the memo. Have a technical section. So a technical review. Comparative section. We'll include a technical review. Okay. So comparison to the findings, the code, and a technical review. Friday, it'll be prepared by Friday, correct, Dave? Thanks, Fred.
Yeah, so we have six days to, five or six days to address it, and, okay. Now, I, one of the original comments, I mean, as we went through this, is, because there may be questions. Is the consultant going to be here for that meeting?
We're happy to be here.
Me, the applicant.
On the applicant, on the twenty-third?
Happy to be here.
Because I think it'll be important, as, as we get into discussions in the board, maybe we won't, but likely we'll have some discussions, some questions, and we'll need, we'll need some input from the applicant.
You know, my only request would be if we have any sense ahead of that, the nature of the questions, whether it, I don't think it will make sense to require asking our engineer or, God forbid, the attorney, but sorry, Mary Lou, with all due respect.
We need an engineer.
Okay.
I mean, at this point in the master plan, I don't know why we need an engineer. If it's an attorney, it's, my humble opinion, it's a bigger issue than, if we, if we find something that you're going to need an attorney for.
You know, people ask questions all across the spectrum, sometimes I can't answer them.
I guess that's up to you then, whether?
We'll be, we're happy to be here, and I welcome it, and, you know, I think that would be probably a good idea, probably shorten everybody's cycle a little bit, so. Twenty-third, right?
Quite fair, okay, too. We're doing this comparative review of the BLCPDA versus the master development plan. I'll be specifically looking at the master development plan section of the BLCPDA, not other parts, introductory parts, or the site plan approval parts, or the other, it's just that section.
Right.
Okay, Fred.
A representative of environmental commission I see has been chewing carpet, trying not to talk.
It tastes horrible.
And I don't know what these people might say, but if it's relevant, I would like to hear it.
Oh, I, I was just going to add that I think, you know, the planning board has particular, a particular expertise when looking at this, at the master plan, looking at it through the planning board lens of, when you get to the site plan and subdivision phases, does this master plan provide you with enough specificity to ensure that, to make your decisions as a board about site plan and subdivision? Is there enough in there so that, you know, that you can, enough guidance for you to make, you know, decisions of whether this, you know, this standard and that standard of the zoning law are met, so.
I think those, those questions will be answered when they submit their particular applications. That's when we'll have to do our due diligence to see how conforms to the?
Right, no, but the question is, is the master, is the master plan specific enough so that when you get the applications, you can look at it against the mass, the requirement, the, you know, to make sure that it's in conformance with the zoning law?
Well, that's what we're doing tonight and at our other meetings, that's what we'll be doing, is trying to get that so we're all comfortable.
Okay, right, when, um?
No, I was.
They don't ask, they don't learn.
When this board gave the recommendations on the local law, you had put in that you wanted to review that, and I know the supervisor was, you know, that had not been in the original, and she said, you know, she has lots of planning experience, having been on this board for about ten years, but she's the only one. So she said it's very important that you folks look at this so you can make sure that you don't have questions, that things are, are clear when you're doing your, your reviews for site plan. So if there's something that seems confusing, bring that up.
Right.
Basically, I think we're trying to, to form the rules, that when they submit their individual updates later on, we will know the rules we're all playing by.
Right, right.
I think, to paraphrase what Jen's saying, it's about how well it's going to perform as a code. Is the master development plan going to perform well under site plan review?
Thank you, Cal.
So, that's, that's, so, that may be something that Dave, during his technical review, obviously is going to look at its performance, how it's going to perform for us. And most of my comments that I, that I gave to Billy last night are technical, picking you type things up in design standards, where site plan approval stuff would be forced. So I'm picking the same thing.
Do we have any more? I think a motion to do it there, I mean, Joe?
Paul, did you ever want to bring?
Paul, sorry, Jer. I thought we were done.
Did your plan talk about two parcels incorporated within, and I see three.
This landowner bought this parcel. So this mine is, I don't know if it's still the same lot or it's two lots, but that's one. What was one, two, three, now it's one, two, only.
So who are the final?
This is the Clark family, and this is the Williams.
I'm curious, could they sell that lot?
I'm sorry?
If they could sell that property, they could do anything you want with that property, or is it?
Get through the secret process, and that's a joke.
They, they have?
Yes, they have, they have everybody.
Are they included in this PDA, or are they exempted?
They are outside.
They're outside.
They're outside.
Yes.
All the white areas are individual home properties?
They're not covered by the BLCPDA.
Why would they be outside? Why would they be outside?
Because when the DEC is their fundings, they said that it will be limited to that property.
And the zoning, the PDA, is not?